Are we ready with the camera?
Uh, yeah, we're all set.
Thank you. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. I don't think there's anything to add to the agenda. Is there? Okay. Uh, we have executive session.
Yes?
It's on, yeah.
Yes, no, I just saw it.
I don't think we need a consent agenda.
No, we're gonna have, we should talk about that outside. All right. So move that we approve the agenda?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Uh, public comment? Mr. Coleman?
Hey, how you doing?
Uh, let me just, before you get started, John, we're gonna try to limit public comments in the interest of brevity. Try to keep your comments to two, three minutes.
That's all.
Is that okay?
I just wanted to say happy new year to everybody. It's 5,775, that's our year. And I wish everybody a good, sweet year. It's the holidays, groceries showing up. I don't know if people understand what the holiday really means. Not only is it the new year, but it's a celebration of the creation of Adam and Eve. A lot of people don't know that, and we celebrate that year after year after year after year. So, anyway, happy new year, and I wish all good things. One thing I would like to say within my three minutes. My heartfelt feelings to the workers that work at the town hall, that have been working under the atmosphere of black mold. And I just, I just, you know, we're once talking about consolidation. I'm not pushing it. I'm just saying it might be some, maybe a good time since they need a new home. And we have a lot of issues with our water infrastructure. And so maybe it's the right time for the village and town to sort of like hand in glove, merge and work together. I think divided we fall, united we stand a little stronger. So with that, I just wish the year and, and I just wish our village board could just be a nice village board that could just do nice things, good positive things for the village and not do any type of legislation that could be divisive. And that's all that I wish for the new year, and thank you all for being here and listening to me. Thank you very much, Sal and Jason.
Other public comment? All right, hearing none. We'll move on to the two items we have to discuss. The first is a discussion on the extension of time request for New York City DEP. I think that's probably one of our folks. Yes. Tom, do you wanna give us the?
Yes.
The Cliff Notes version here?
All the board members received two memos from Dave Klaus. The second version of those memos were broken into, was, actually, broken, was divided into four paragraphs requesting an extension of time and also an extension of budget to support already approved activities. And then additional activities to establish the viability of those options that are presented or will be presented in the report. None of these requests will in any way deter the submission of the final report by September 30th. So we still expect a report, although there are activities that relate, on the one hand, to the resolution of some issues that remain with some residents in the Plains Road area. Then the sampling of the Walkill River each month for the remaining months of this year, because we assured DO, I should say DOH, people don't know, Department of Health that we would sample the Walkill every month in anticipation of a decision to be made concerning its viability as a source of drinking water. And that we would, in the third instance, continue the assessment of the various options from an engineering point of view to determine the design aspects of the various options and any other cost factors. That's the Cliff Notes version.
Lovely.
I think I can, I hope, I'm gonna ask if you don't mind
Please.
to be sure that I have gotten at least the substance of it correct.
That's good. I mean, that's fine. We just wanna be able to keep supporting the project as it goes.
You have the dollar amount.
We have, actually, if you look at the second version of the memo that Dave sent, you will see a dollar amount attached to each of the activities. However, that dollar amount does not include contingencies for insurance and legal fees that may be connected with claims against the village. And our engineer is in no position to provide us with those amounts.
What about our two lawyers?
We have gotten estimates from our treasurer, which I think she would even say are, you know, guesses in the absence of concrete knowledge about how many claims and how long they would go on. She's estimating a certain amount of money that would be billed against the village because the village in each claim will have a deductible that has to cover with the insurance company. So how much that actually is, I think, should be put in a separate request to...
I'm gonna move the $50,000 of the current balance in hand be held in escrow for the purposes of the deductible.
I don't know that, I don't know that there are $50,000 that are on account. I know that there, I know that with the last payment that was made, there were still $50,000.
If I may?
Please help us.
In terms of David and I were just talking, just to be clear, I don't think any funds that are set aside would be held in escrow, let's say. They'd be in a separate line item or a dedicated fund for use when the need arises.
Okay. I would change escrow to dedicated fund. Thank you, Will.
Is it appropriate, Will, for us to, I mean, for us to, or can we even encumber money that was currently, that's currently in the budget? Or is this something we have to ask for the, ask for in the new appropriations?
The problem we have is that in our initial contract with DEP, we had, we had dollar amounts dedicated for purposes. And our contract with DEP is just dedicated for purposes. So, yep.
There's nothing in...
Excuse me, Sal. Can I address that? I had a conversation with DEP within the last week in which it was suggested, they know that we're in a position to make requests of them that they will not have been prepared for before. So, but it was suggested that we make a request just for the extension of time.
Yeah.
The easy one. So that we say that we're requesting an extension of time from September 30th to December 31st to, and I wrote down some language here, of the current contract to complete already approved actions that will require this time after submission of the project report on September 30th, 2014. So that's a request one, excuse me, just for the extension of time. And then that we also request support for what I believe is in one of the paragraphs of Dave's, paragraph four of Dave's memo, the work to assess the viability of the projects that are recommended in the report. And I don't have the exact amount, but it's in Dave's memo, and it might be $14,000.
It is.
It is. And then thirdly, that we request a supplemental budget. And the supplemental budget is to support any other activities
Right.
that are required.
Including the insurance.
Including the insurance.
But...
So what motion do we need to make?
Well, we have a three-part, we have a three-part request. We can make each of them separately, or we can make them together. I would, I would take whatever advice we get from council.
I will agree with that, Dave Merzink. We had a contingency line in that contract.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm suggesting. We hold aside for the purposes of insurance.
I don't know what the amount of contingency line was.
I thought it was more than necessary. Do you remember, Nancy?
I believe...
I do.
If, if it is, Dave, do you remember?
I believe it was $20,000, and I know some of that's been spent
Oh, okay.
The access commissions or whatever.
All right, so that does not, we're gonna have to do it the way you suggested. I withdraw the motion.
Okay. Let me ask the lawyers. What's the simplest way for us to, what's the simplest way for us to move forward here?
I don't, I don't think there's any harm in making one communication with DEP, you know, with three prongs in it, the extension and the other two issues. This way, we're putting them on notice now rather than waiting, giving them a complete picture of what we're currently looking at, including the extension, the claims that have been asserted, and other things that the village is gonna need to do to administer the project. So I don't have a problem.
Okay.
Yeah, my concern, my concern is that they want it three ways so they can approve one and disapprove the other. And that, that may be ultimately to our benefit because we wanna have, because we definitely want the extension through December 31st. Because we need, we need to do the ongoing work to determine alternatives. We obviously also want at least the $14,000 additional that we have so that it's, that we have, that they've prepared psychologically for. And then there's a third request for the legal bench costs, which, which is gonna be, and when we do that, in one motion with three pieces of three pieces separately, I don't know if it makes a lot of difference, but I think they should all be done before we meet here tonight.
Yeah. So, Tom, do you have language for one of them now? Do you wanna take a whack at one motion with three parts?
Um, yes, I'm not sure what the header should be. So, the header may simply be that the Village of New Pauls requests of New York City Department of Environmental Protection an extension of three months of the current contract to complete already approved actions. And then this sounds a little redundant, but I didn't know how else to do it, that will require time after submission of the project report on September 30th, 2014.
We want that as a...
So that's, that's one to be, part A.
Part A.
What's part B?
Part B. The Village of New Pauls requests support to assess the viability of the options presented in the project report as detailed in paragraph four of Dave Klaus's September 23rd memo. If we can append that whole paragraph, will that be okay? Or do we need to say in the amount of $14,000?
Either way would be appropriate.
Can we say?
Maybe choice, yeah.
So appended.
All right, so that's part B.
Well, wait, wait, wait. And I wanna make sure that we know exactly which memo, because he did send these two memos. So I'm saying his memo titled Summary of Supplemental Budget Modification Request.
We believe it should be appended just so they get a completely clear picture from the project professional.
And so we say, see appended memo.
Right. And so that's part B.
And then request three, Village of New Pauls requests a supplemental budget of...
What's left in, out of the 20?
I have $98,000 left in the entire $840,000. That's what's left in the budget right now, and we pay it up to August 15th.
Nancy, you, you give us a figure of about $50,000?
I would say $50,000.
$50,000.
So I think that's our figure.
You agree?
Absolutely.
Minimum.
So a request, the supplemental budget of $50,000 to support activities relating to legal and insurance, or projected, I have to say projected, right? Projected legal and insurance costs.
So I heard somebody say $50,000 should be the minimum. Should we do more?
The problem is we don't, we, we, we're, it's pure guesswork at this point. We know what our deductible is for each claim,
Right, right.
which, which is gonna go out the door automatically. So, and if the carrier then comes in and spends the claims and there are no further claims against the village, then that'll be it. If there are other claims, other, other actions, other things that arise, we just, we just don't know. One of the, one of the issues we're dealing with is with our, with our insurance carriers. We have, we picked up a new one and ended an old one. So it occurred during the new contract that the issues that they're, the claims are made occurred to the old one.
Right, right.
So, so they're playing table tennis with us. And again, it appears that they're coming in to cover this in accordance with our contract, but we have an obligation to cooperate with them. And so that's, that's exactly what we're doing. But I think it's appropriate to notify New York City that we're gonna have these additional costs that are directly related to this
Right, right.
this project. And, but we wanna be, we wanna be rational in our requests, not asking too little, not asking too much. But right now, the $50,000 is a, is a good, is a good guess as to what's gonna happen. If it goes, if it goes beyond that, well, then we're gonna be able to show, we're gonna be able to show actual costs and documented costs as opposed to theoretical stuff. But we wanna make sure that we're on, on the record to make sure that the first, that the first shot, which may be also the last shot, who knows? Is covered.
Okay. All right.
Okay. So Katie, I'll give you all of these, of course.
And say, at least, and it may be...
Say at this time.
Yeah. At this time.
I would say at this.
At this time, okay.
The problem will be if you, you can't make a request that says at least, you have to request...
But we need to say at this time.
Okay. So we'll have to carry it in at this time.
I second it.
I heard. Is there any other discussion on this?
I, yes. Do we need to request, and only you are going to be able to answer this, Dave? Are there issues that need to be dealt with by the residents that you need to deal with that are not in the budget?
Yes. We have, there was 20 residences that had additional care that was being provided. We've been kind of methodically addressing those with well disinfections and re-sampling. There are 12 of those now that are off. There's still eight that are on. We're waiting for re-sampling and some other issues to be able to deal with.
So do we need to add a fourth part to this? And that is funding for the remediation of wells?
Resolving the well issues.
Yes.
Right.
How much?
That's a hard one. I have a, I put together in that budget request modification, a request for an allowance to not only take care of those that are still ongoing, that we expect to be resolved soon, but also to be able to support the board as they go through the reports and start to get into seeker issues and that.
So I guess my question is, is there enough?
I don't know, I'm not prepared to say yes, but I am prepared to say that there was some money still in the budget that had not been either spent or accounted for. And those monies are already in there to cover already approved activities. These are the approved activities that we requested funds for in the first extension.
That wasn't quite my question, but...
This is support. After the report is submitted on Tuesday, hallelujah, it'll be done. After that, the board is going to be meeting and going through the report and asking quite a few questions, and we wanna be able to support that. So that's the part that is...
And we have that money in the, in the request already?
That's what I'm trying to find out.
I know, I'm just restating the question, your question.
No.
Do we need to ask for more money to cover those?
Some additional money. And I, you know, it's really difficult to know how many meetings there will be, how much Russell will be...
10, 15?
I was looking for an allowance that the DEP would provide, the POC, and then only, you know, whatever time it took. It's gonna be more than 10 or 15, I believe, just to be able to address the remaining homes and...
Would it be appropriate, Dave, to ask for a fourth category, an allowance of $50,000 which will be refunded if not needed for additional remediation that may be required?
I have another idea. I have another idea.
Okay.
In request two, we're asking for support to assess the viability of the options presented in the report as detailed in paragraph four of Dave Klaus's memo. But in the prior, oh no, I mean, if we're asking for support to funds, to support the viability of the project, is that not still what you are now talking about? Meeting with the board, having the hydrogeologist also meet with the board. So instead of saying $14,000, let's include the other sum that you had included in your third paragraph in, with the $14,000. So we're not making four requests, but we're folding into the notion or the, the activities to assess the viability of the options. This ongoing interaction with the engineer and the hydrogeologist.
The fourth paragraph was to be able to do, refine the engineering as we got closer to
Right.
the examples. This other is the support to be able to, whatever you need, to be able to understand the report and come to a decision. And that's a really tough figure to figure.
What about, give us a range. More than $10, less than $1 million?
More than $10 and less than $1 million.
Can you narrow it down any?
I'd say 50.
That's what I thought.
Five oh?
Five oh?
Zero, zero, zero.
So can, can we then ask for a, a total of $64,000 to cover the two phases of the assessment of the viability of the actions? One will be the engineering aspects such as the continuing sampling of the Walkill and so forth. And the other will be the necessary support to the board in its assessment of those.
So how would you like to amend your motion?
I would like to say that instead of the simpler formula, that we have a two-part formula that says we are, Village of New Pauls requests support to assess the viability of the options presented in the project report as detailed in paragraph four of Dave Klaus's September 23rd memo, titled such and such and such and such. And an additional $50,000 to support ongoing advisement and consulting with the principal engineer and hydrogeologist, Cloud Chason and company.
Sally, you seconded, is that all right with you?
We put in there for study and review as well.
For study and review.
But I would like to make it $75,000 and that it will, if we don't use it, it will be refunded because there are remediation issues that have to be dealt with, and so...
And I agree because I'd rather, I'd rather do it that way than have to make some other additional costs.
Discussion for?
I, I will second my amendment to the motion.
Tom has to agree that it's...
You agree with that?
No, I, I'm concerned. I, I want us to have as much clarity as we can when we're making a recommendation because we're now, we're now also making a request for real money from DEP. And I don't want us to appear that we're making a frivolous request. I want us to be grounded as much as possible in the reality of our project.
Well, I think if, if the number that was quoted just now is 64, 75 is not, I don't think that that would appear frivolous. If we said 100, maybe it would. But I think if the real number
It's a real number.
Is 64.
There are real issues that have to be dealt with
Additional $11,000.
that have not been anticipated in the funding. And I think we are safer with asking for the $75,000 to be refunded if we don't use it. And we're protected. Do you agree to my amendment?
I don't know. What do you?
The support that the village would have, it's kind of an on-call. You use this when you lead us on trying to work through this report and make a decision on where you're going as far as the project, so...
So it's up to us to decide?
Yeah, it really is more of an allowance.
You think it's unreasonable, what I suggested?
No.
Okay.
What do I, what do I turn this thing? I mean, some of you guys that work with DEP, you know, this is my first crack at it.
I know, you're already turned white.
Yeah, well, it's gotten a lot whiter, actually, here this year.
It's always a balancing act. On the one hand, no matter what you say, they're gonna say that's way too much. On the other, on the other hand, we also have to be realistic in what we ask for.
Yeah.
Because again, if we, if we say, well, we only want 10, and then we need 15, and then we want 25, then it becomes, you know, the knox and cheese.
Yeah.
Thing is always getting more and more. So, so the, the, I don't know that the amount is paramount. I think the, I think the rationalization and the explanation, and that, again, we're not picking a number out of the air.
Right.
And I, and that, that if you do have a... My experience, they will be more inclined to say, submit the bills and then we'll analyze them and see whether they're sufficient, whether they're justified, as opposed to giving us a POC from which to, from which to deduct based on our own opinion as to whether the, whether the expenses are appropriate or not, how to, how to best, how to best present that in a, I mean, again, it's, they would always like to have something that's subject to review of DEP.
Right.
But Dave, I think it is...
Expenses reasonably expended.
Yeah.
I think it is correct to say that when DEP, when we got involved in this, that some of the things that were discovered were not anticipated. And I think in light of that, we can say we're doing you a favor and we didn't anticipate, nor did some of the people who need help.
It's not like DEP has had, has never heard a bus stop warning before. Trust me.
So I would suggest that we just qualify it by saying that there are unanticipated remediations that are needed. And if they're not needed, the money will be refunded.
All right, how do we frame that in a...
Just the way I did.
Okay. I don't know what to do.
Do you accept that?
I wasn't going to, but I will.
Is there a...
I think we're...
I wanna make sure that they're not gonna say something about this motion before we...
Is there any other problem with the motion, Dave and Will?
I think they're figuring it out.
Well, how should it be phrased? Is that what, what are you talking, what are you talking about over there? Tell us. Or we can go to executive session if you need.
Yeah, it's discussing with council.
Yeah.
The, we just, we wanna make sure, we're, again, it's the balancing act. We wanna make sure that we're, that we're asking for enough, but that it's not a honey pot, that they're, they're concerned that what we're doing is, is...
Given that this is essentially arbitrary and no matter what number we put out, because we don't have a hard and fast budget.
Yeah, one of the things that...
Is, well, let me just finish the question. Is it really a material difference between 50 and 75? In terms of what we're asking for? I mean, I know it's $25,000 difference, but are they both reasonable number?
Sure, the, the, the number is not the most important thing.
Right.
As I'm saying, the, the issue, the issue is documentable and reasonable expenses for, that are moving toward the completion of the project. That's, that's the hard number. And again, I mean... And again, they're, they're going to want to have something in there that says that's subject to reasonable review by DEP.
So how would you phrase that part of the motion in whole?
I mean, I would put a dollar on that.
Absolutely.
I would put, you know, put the dollar amount on it, and in the motion authorize when the letter is written to them, that the village understands that it's subject to review of all the documented expenses, you know, to that effect, so they, you know, they know we're not just asking for some excessive amount, and we're going to put it in a fund someplace and never tell them about it. They need to be assured by the village that it's going to be appropriate expenses and actual expenses, we want to know from actual numbers.
So we have, I'm assuming, based on the responses, we have consensus on the three, A, B, and C that Tom read, Tom, or Will, or Dave, somebody, if you could just restate from the beginning what this new addition to those three points would say?
Well, I think the first point was okay, the first point was just the extension.
The extension, yes.
That one's fine. We're talking about, and I think C was fine, that was the litigation slash insurance.
Yes.
Discussion. That one was fine.
Yeah.
So we're really talking about B.
Tom, you want to just, you don't have to read the whole thing, but just kind of insert the new phrase?
What I...
So we can, yeah, please go.
The first iteration of B made reference to Dave's September twenty-third memo, which was fourteen thousand dollar figure.
In paragraph four, but he had a larger figure in paragraph three.
What was the figure in paragraph three that we stated?
Sixty-four?
No. It was a...
We just came up with that.
That was just the numbers we had together, fifty and fourteen.
There was fifty-six, fifty-seven thousand, that was the community relations piece. It was another support to the board, which was thirty-six.
So that's ninety thousand.
Right. But again, is looking for a number, and the village is the one that governs how it's spent.
My remediation question. Fits into that figure?
Yes.
Okay, so we're...
That's in that first part.
So is that in paragraph three or paragraph two and three?
Those two were in one and two there, Tom.
One and two.
So we're appending it as appended in the memo, paragraph one and two? One and three?
One and two. That was, again, it's really a moving target at this point on what it's going to take. That's, I'm sure, a high side of it.
We see that really is.
So then we're going to be requesting...
We don't have the one with the numbers.
We need to see it.
So Tom, you made the motion, and Sally was trying to...
I'm floundering.
We're all floundering.
I thought I had it down from my point of view.
So we were, well, we had consensus at fifty, and then seventy-five was mentioned, and that got people changing their minds.
And then ninety was mentioned.
Well, right, and then it was...
I guess.
How do you feel about that?
My point is this, Lathan, I don't know what the magic number is, you're going to have to recommend a magic number, which you have. I want to make sure that there is additional funds in there, and we took care of the litigation part, but that there is additional money in there for any remediation that you and Russell believe is necessary to be done to resolve problems for people. So how much money do I need to do all that?
I believe the seventy-five will do it. There's money in there for the wellness infection, the subcontractors, and all that, but I think seventy-five is as good as ninety. I mean, I was really looking for something, I worked with Russell on this, came up with a number, and tried to make sure there was enough.
So it's seventy-five.
Does anyone object to the seventy-five?
Wait, wait, wait. May I ask, may I ask if someone will make a motion for the board to go into executive session to confer with council and engineer for a...
Zoom in.
All in favor?
All right.
This will be brief.
Good.
We'll be right back.
Nancy and David.
I'm making a...
Nancy and Buddy.
Somebody being here for, if that weren't hours worth of...
the...
And it's not so much...
I said, the twenty-five years, it was plenty of time, which my, my standard joke is, I still have an upper act, was I...
I went up there because I just...
Like I say, is there a...
It, it, it's not just our estate, but it's saying, again, estate that's more than...
Well, it's, it's, there are...
It's not as nice as...
It's not as good 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 as...
It's two A.M.
Does it allow it to be working?
Or any place I go?
Myself, it's probably not going to be...
But I think what she said...
Bill, read what it's like.
Everything that I was able to get them to do, they didn't even talk about it.
I'm not going to say that.
Yes.
Exactly, as, you know, they were free for each people, create things, it's like, right?
And then, you know, and then every other team kept a little vision, developed a study,
which I crack up.
I mean, I don't have a problem, it just, I find it extremely funny that you were there, you have a disability, and you don't go to the edge, despite the consideration, and that's what, that was one of the first fights I got into, I got into, was goddamn, so I was to steal everything from White Pen County.
Oh, so they...
Well, remember, the first thing I got into White Pen County is that I had everything property, about six inches, so that they could, they could, they could extend the work, so it was too much to...
What do you mean? Because they had the means, they were going to...
This was like your property?
Yeah.
They were still two teams, not really just your company.
All right.
All around, by the side, you were...
Hey, it's...
They don't know what they're saying.
They don't, that's only got me saying...
It's mine.
They're proposing...
What they were going to do is, they, they, when I get it too bad, they were going to cut, I think, three, I put, I put it in the swing, because I remember exactly, I know it's at least, if somebody shows a bush, they cut, oh, yeah, I know, because I'm like that, and everyone's saying that they're going to die because of all...
Right.
And, you know, my point was, I said, people have...
I mean, it's not more than...
It's just like...
John, I do like, I don't think, just because you say so, and we have a lot of problems like that.
He doesn't care, and...
Yeah, and the problem, you know, I mean, he doesn't...
You mean the same...
Absolutely.
It's amazing that when he needs to go to services, which when he needs it, and he knows, but when I put him there this morning, he's, 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 he's clear, all the same time, as they were promised. Now, I don't expect, like, actually, you know, just, it's not what I expected him to, but I didn't, I kind of got my thing, but anyway, we had a big argument there, but we had...
It's, I wouldn't say, because I think it's what I think of it.
I don't take anybody, because I didn't expect anybody to that, but by the same token, it's just kind of a, because we brought the money this morning.
It's the same thing, I mean, we were just doing, and I had a lot, and I gave him, said that's all right, we were the rest of the church people, when they paid for this, when my job, my job, and nobody did anything about it, and no, and the priest didn't... And my father didn't like it, really doesn't understand, because he would say, he's... Now, maybe more, because I really don't remember anymore, but the custodians were always anti-islam, anti-true Islam, because, yeah, because their belief was that this was a country, a man, a God, a worshipper. You guys got your own little shit, just leave it. I, I, I know, there is no Jewish, I'm a Catholic here, that that papamani, U.A., reconstructionist, which was leading on, it's great, the congregation, forget your wishes, the congregation, I would, we're, we're, we're...
Oh, would make the motion come out of executive session?
Sally, we already voted.
We did? I did, I didn't hear it, I seconded, I missed it, but I moved, carry on, second. I was oblivious. And date third?
All right, so Tom, you want to amend your motion again?
Yes. The parts one and three stand as amended before, that is, part three as amended by trustee Rhodes. Part two is Request Two, "The Village of New Paul's requests support to assess the viability of options presented in the project report as detailed in the revised memorandum of Dave Klausen to be provided to the board on September twenty-ninth, memo titled Summary of Supplemental Budget Modification Request in the Amount of Seventy-Five Thousand Dollars."
All right, and that's acceptable to you, Sally?
I, it's perfectly acceptable.
All right, is there any more discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Would you prefer this be done by resolution? Okay.
But this remains properly...
Okay.
All right, the second item on the agenda is a request from DBW Superintendent Trwilliger to add the purchase of a one-ten dump truck to the fall borrowing. I'll move that for discussion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will move to authorize by resolution the treasurer being charged with adding this borrowing to the borrowing for the fire truck.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and now...
Technically, because it's a resolution, it should be a roll call.
Yep.
So, but just quickly, West?
Yes.
Rosler?
Yes.
Rhodes?
Yes.
Vasco?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and I'm going to move this back into executive session. That's the last, right, we, yes, we do move to executive session. Is there a second?
Second?
Oh, I'm sorry, to discuss potential litigation.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Folks, this is the last thing we're going to be doing on the agenda, so you're welcome to stay if you'd like, we're...
There will be no motions.
Right, we're not voting on anything when we come out after this, so, for your information. All right.
Are you going to adjourn?
Huh?
No. That's, I mean, you're talking on the agenda, I mean, but you, you have...
No, we've got to consult with our lawyers.
If the agenda was on...
You have to stay, for staying, have to...
At the beginning of the meeting, that would...
Oh, not close.
Well, I think for a public clarification, the executive session is not involved.
Ask, ask Dave, ask one of the lawyers if that's...
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, no, I understand the question. But no.
In executive session, Dave.
Sure.
I'd appreciate it if it's...